City Council meeting of April 4th, 2023 to order. Can we please have a roll call, Sam?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quidno?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
All right, so Mr. Fields is joining us online tonight. All right, can everyone please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is correction and approval of City Council meeting minutes of March 21st, 2023. Any corrections? Comments? Seeing none, I was told we don't have to vote on this, so we'll just enter this into our record. Thank you. Next is correspondence from the community. Mr. Fields?
I just shut off an email a couple of weeks ago trying to get out of an email chain that was going back and forth about EMS negotiations. I did receive Missy's forwarded email on the Jefferson County Water Conservation Program. And then I also had an email just giving me some dates and times for upcoming Jefferson County Highway meetings. That's it for myself.
Fantastic, thank you. Ms. Kurler?
I also received the forwarded email about the groundwater study that Jefferson County is doing, the county meetings about EMS. I got an inquiry about the comprehensive plan and the remaining steps, and an inquiry about the Sandy Beach survey.
Fantastic. I'm gonna wait till the end of the meeting. I did a lot of canvassing in the last couple of weeks and got a great opportunity to meet a lot of people and hear a lot of things. So I'm gonna wait till the end of the meeting when we get to the section as far as future agenda items, and wait for the polls to be closed because Mr. Temporally doesn't have the same opportunity while the polls are open, so. Mrs. Bishop?
Okay, I had a correspondence from a landowner who owns a business here. I had a correspondence from Quad County Runners about the ATV ordinance. I had a correspondence from a Plan Commissioner about proposed and potential Plan Commission discussions. I had correspondence from a county representative about county EMS decisions and agenda items. A correspondence, well, two regarding the Mill Pond and the possible ad hoc committee that I mentioned as an agenda item. And then I also had a correspondence with some comments regarding the comprehensive plan that the Plan Commission is taking up.
Great. Ms. Quidno?
I too had email regarding the groundwater study, the county road highway, as well as the correspondence from a county representative regarding EMS in Jefferson County, and also some information about the EMS proposals that are being placed.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll go to questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you'd register with the city clerk before the meeting's been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. So the floor is currently open for public comment? Any comments tonight? Anybody online? All right, public comment is closed, thank you. City Manager's report. Report is included in your packet. If there's any questions, happy to answer them. Any questions for Mr. Daley?
A question about that channel dredging. You said a public hearing may be necessary. Have you heard anything further on that?
We've not yet. It's if we receive a request, we have not received one.
Okay, okay, oh, during the 30-day comment period. So I know initially Mr. Schreiner's hope was to do that work during the frozen time of year. That sounds like it's gonna be too late for that. So is that gonna still occur this spring or maybe not till next winter?
Not till next winter.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right. Next is Councilmember Board reports and acceptance of minutes from the Lake Mills Housing Authority of January 24th, 2023. Any questions or additional information there?
I don't have anything to add. I'd be happy to answer questions if anyone has any.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll accept that into our record as well. Moving on to council business. First on the agenda is a discussion decision on confirmation of City Council President's appointment of Wayne Magnuson, or Magnus?
Magnusson.
Magnusson, excuse me, of the Board of Terms, Board of Reviews. His term is ending in 2028. Normally, we would wait on this and do this the first meeting in May, but we have a Board of Review that happens that same night that normally this appointment would take place, and we're concerned about having a quorum in that meeting. And Mr. Magnusson's been on this board for a long time and has agreed to renew and be on the board again. So I didn't see, I thought it was appropriate to go ahead and move forward with this, knowing that we wanted to make sure we had a quorum for the Board of Review. Does that make sense? So it's my recommendation to appoint Wayne Magnusson to the Board of Review.
I'll make a motion to approve the, or to confirm the City Council President's appointment of Wayne Magnusson to the Board of Review.
Second.
So motion by Ms. Kurler, second by Mrs. Bishop. Any discussion? Let's just do a hand on this one. All those in favor? That's a 5-0, that passes. Thank you. Next is a discussion decision on selecting, selection of City Council member participation of the Lake Mills Area School District Collaboration Advisory Team. There's a memo in our notes on this. Mr. Daley, do you have some further information?
Yep, so the superintendent reached out to me regarding the school district initiative to garner additional community feedback regarding school facilities and facility needs of the community at large following the results of their referendum last year. And so I, they asked, they reached out to me to ask if I would participate, and I agreed, and then I inquired if they would like a City Council representative on that advisory team as well. And they indicated that they would, they would like a participant from the City Council on that advisory team. So the advisory team will be looking at what the needs are and making recommendations to, making a recommendation to the school board, who will then ultimately decide how to, taking those needs and formulating them into a future referendum if one would be necessary. So it was, it's before you tonight. If the council would like to appoint somebody to participate on that advisory team, they would welcome, welcome your participation.
Okay. Any comment, questions? Yes?
I guess I just wanted to share a couple of thoughts or comments. I was pleased to see that the school district was doing this, and one of the things that I felt was a little bit of a gap in their proposal from last fall was that it didn't incorporate the rec program, the rec department, and their needs, and by extension, the Fund 80 needs such as senior center, Club 55. And I know Mr. Fields is well aware. I kind of went back through the City Council records to look at all the conversations that have been happening since really 2016 on the Rock Lake Activities Center and a potential partnership with the city and the school district on that. So I'm hoping that this team will be able to talk about those issues and maybe sort of pick that ball up. It's been, you know, when I look back through the record, it's been close to three years now that the council hasn't moved anything forward on the Rock Lake Activities Center issue. And maybe through these community conversations and addressing those broader needs, maybe there can be some resolution. I talked to Drake earlier, and I don't know if you feel that you need any more direction at this point, but as this team moves forward in meeting, if you feel like you need the council to weigh in on some direction, you know, definitely let us know that if we need to give any further direction than what's already on the record.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
I would like to volunteer for this since I already work with Drake and the superintendent on the library board. There's a pre-existing relationship there and an understanding I feel that would be easy to navigate with this particular advisory team, not to mention the fact I have a background in education. Not that that would make me biased. I think it would help with understanding their needs as well as our own.
Okay. I would like to throw some caution to the wind here, I guess. When Mr. Daley brought this up to me and asked if he could bring it to council, I was in agreement. The more I thought about it, and the more I reviewed it, and the more I looked at the documentation that was provided, I'm concerned that we're crossing the line here. That city government does city government things, school board does school things. We're talking about a school referendum here, and I think we're crossing the line as far as having an elected city official serving in this capacity. If something happens, if questions come up there, maybe I don't agree with what you're stating. You're representing city government, and now you're dragging in the rest of city government to talk about that issue. And I'm concerned about that. I think that maybe it would be appropriate for city staff, but not for an elected official. I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but, but we did have somebody come in front of council right before the last school referendum and ask for our opinions, and we chose not to do that because city government's one thing, school government's another thing. Any thoughts there?
I think Mr. Waters, oh, Steve, go ahead.
I was gonna say I concur with Mr. Waters in that just the optics of sitting on the board it might look like we're endorsing what they're, what they're gonna ultimately propose, so I would just be cautious about it.
Yeah, Ms. Quidno, I love that this seems like, it really is right up your alley because you have that passion for education. I do share Mr. Waters' concerns about crossing those boundaries. You know, I will certainly follow what this advisor team is doing and talking about as a citizen and a resident of Lake Mills, but I think from, at least my position, sitting on the council, I don't want to cross those boundaries. So that's where I think I would stand on that.
Any other discussion, or should we do a quick?
Well, I guess I would also comment on your concerns, Mr. Waters, and I would agree with those to a certain extent. One thing that's not clear to me, and I looked on the school district's website, and I didn't find a lot of detail about the structure or organization of this team and whether a council member would just be sort of, you know, advisory or ad hoc versus voting, or whether they actually are going to be voting. I know they're taking applications now, so that did cross my mind as well. It might be nice to have a council member sitting in and staying up to breast on what's happening, but not necessarily being a voting member since one council member can't speak for all of us. And, you know, based on that, you know, maybe staff can fill that role. I think with Michelle's enthusiasm for it, I would, I would be happy if she wanted to attend as long as it's not in a role where, like you said, it would cross any kind of line in terms of her official role or not with any assumption that she's speaking on behalf of the whole council.
I think, I think that I could do that, but I could understand, and I understand where all of you are coming from, where it may be perceived that I'm speaking on behalf of the council as a council member. So you're right, it is up my alley, but I completely understand and agree with the concerns that you all have, and thank you for presenting them as such. And I think I will revoke my volunteerism and know that if the roles are more laid out to where it's an advisory position as opposed to a voting position, I think that that may well be a safer route, and that my interest in doing that would still be there. But yeah, you all make sense, so I'll just stick with that.
So as far as a City Council member, let's, we would not have an interest in that, but as far as city staff goes, is that appropriate? Is the council okay with that type of action? Any thoughts there?
I'm, I'm okay with that. I believe the city manager can balance his priorities, and so I trust him to that extent to do that, so.
Agreed.
Any questions there?
Yeah, unless we.
I see a lot of head nodding.
I mean, there's certainly a time commitment involved, but it, you know, with the interest that I raise with respect to the Rock Lake Activities Center, I think there is gonna be some overlap in terms of our interests as well. And so if you're hearing all of those discussions and able to keep us informed on how that might overlap, the timing seems good for, you know, next budget season and all of that as well.
We good to go there, Drake? Do you have anything else?
Nope, that's enough for me.
Do you need a decision from us to?
No.
For you to staff it, you don't, okay.
I don't think we need formal action there.
No. Okay, great. Let's move on to item C. That's a discussion decision on Class A liquor and Class A fermented malt beverages, cigarettes, and tobacco, and all kinds of other stuff. We're talking 819 North Main Street, the I-Mart. I guess, Sam, can you read that? Is there a motion there? There's... Let me click on that, there's an application.
Just an application, no motion.
Okay. All right, so... Liquor license application for 819 North Main Street, I-Mart, Wisconsin, WI 0114. Any discussion on that, or staff discussion?
Nope, it's a change of agent. Kind of a root, a routine activity on the business's part to ensure that their agent remains up to date.
Okay. Any questions? So we need a motion to approve this liquor license, then? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Class A liquor and Class A fermented malt beverage, cigarette and tobacco and weights and measures licensed for Amir Investment, Inc., trade name I-Mart, WI 0114, located 819 North Main Street, appointing Cindy Mitchell as agent.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kurler, I think the second was Mrs. Bishop? Yep, okay, great. Any further discussion? Sam, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0.
All right, next is a similar application. This is for a different location at 206 West Main Street. Can we have a motion?
I move to approve the Class A fermented malt beverage and Class A liquor cider only, cigarette and tobacco and weights and measures licenses for Amir Investment, Inc., trade name I-Mart, WI 0116, located at 206 West Madison Street, and appointing Cheryl Stovall as agent.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidno. Further discussion? Sam, can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidno?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Kurler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. All right. Next, a discussion, discussion decision on authorizing to apply for 2023 COPS Hiring Program grant. And... Why don't we go to staff comment and get some more information, and then we'll look at action after that? Does that make sense? Okay, staff comment?
Good evening. In your meeting packets, I included a copy of the letter that I read to you at the January 17th council meeting with a request to add two additional police officers to our department. I included that just so you had it in front of you as kind of a reminder of what I talked about then. And then I also included my letter regarding the 2023 COPS Hiring Program, and my request is for approval to apply for monies under this program. I explained the program in the letter. I'm happy to answer any questions about it, or if you want an explanation, I can give that as well, but I included it so you could read it before we got here tonight. But essentially, it's a way of funding additional police positions potentially if we're granted an award under this grant. And the reason I bring it up, number one, is because the solicitation is currently open for it, and I can apply up until May 4th. But also, in previous discussions about adding staff, I realize that one of my responsibilities is to try to find funding for that staff because it's a huge hurdle to overcome. And I don't want to assume that the council wants to or is willing to add staff to the police department, but if you are, I'm willing to do whatever I can do to try to make sure that the funding part of it is met as well. So that's my reasoning for applying for the grant. It's, it's a limited-term grant. They provide funding for three years, up to 75% of an additional officer's salary for each additional officer that they would approve. And then the funding would fall back on the city at 100% of that position. But I am happy to answer questions that you may have.
Any questions for the chief? Yes.
Thank you for being here, Chief, and for finding this opportunity. It's one of the things I appreciate about many of our city staff is they're always looking for other, other funding sources to keep our programs vital. So thanks for finding this and bringing it to us. Based on their website, it looks like the applications are due in early May. Do you know when you would hear back then after you apply?
I don't. It is normally a months-long process before they actually provide who they've given funding to. And that plays into, the grant actually works to provide time for councils to budget for their positions and, and the hiring process and what else. They provide you a five-year window in which to use the three years' worth of funds. So if we were selected, let's say, for example, this fall, our five-year window would start, and we would have five years in order to hire that officer and then hopefully fund that for three of those five years through the grant.
So we could potentially work this into our budget planning for 2024 and moving forward, then?
Yes, 2024, or even potentially not until 2025 because we would have a two-year kind of cushion before we had to hire the person. My intent would be to hire them in 2024 if we were approved for funding and we could work it into the budget. But the five-year window allows for that leeway.
And then I saw that their program maximum is $125,000 per officer, and so that's why you have the 42, 42, 41, I think, were the numbers for each year because that fits within that maximum that they approved?
Correct, and I just did it so you had an example of concrete numbers of what it could look like. The $125,000 is for the three-year period for each officer, yes.
Okay. And then are there any other costs we should be thinking about in terms of like training or equipment for new officers?
There is an initial equipment cost for certain. Every time we hire an officer, there's a cost to outfit them with uniforms and equipment, normally about $2,500 to outfit a new officer. There are annual training costs for all of our officers. They need a minimum of 24 hours of annual training, so any additional staff would need that as well. That is offset a little bit. The state provides $160 of funding per officer to offset the cost of that training. So we do receive some of the funds back for that depending on what training we send them to. It may cost us more, it may not, than the $160. I included in the estimates family health insurance plan, WRS benefits, basically any benefits that we would pay out to an employee assuming that they took a family health plan. And so the numbers that I put in there are the high end of the numbers rather than focusing on the low end of the numbers because we obviously would have to prepare for the high end. And if, if someone chose to take a single health insurance plan or no health insurance plan, obviously it would reduce overall cost to the, for the city's portion, the grant would still cover their $125,000.
I guess one more question. If you apply for funding for two officers, is it possible that you could be awarded funding for just one? Or maybe not be awarded any?
Yeah, we certainly could not be offered any funding, or they can reduce the funding request how they see fit. So since, if my request was for two officers, they could do two, one, or zero would be the options. And then I would add to that, there isn't a requirement that we hire those officers and take the funding if we are approved for it. Obviously, that's a decision that the council would have to make at the time that we got approved, if we were to be approved. So I put this out there to you, understanding that I'm not gonna apply for a program if the council says, no, we're not interested in applying for this because there's, we don't think that we'll approve these additional positions. But if we're open-minded to the idea, I can apply. We can see what happens with the grant process. If we're approved funding, then I come back to the council, and at that time, we sit down, obviously as part of the budgetary discussion as well, and decide if we can actually hire the positions that we were approved for.
Thank you.
Is there any further questions? Yes.
Chief, thank you. Each time you come before us, you're working on a new way to further improve and take ownership of your department, and I so appreciate that. So just a quick question, noting that the funds would be for entry-level salaries, but in your initial letter and presentation to us, you had talked about the need to hire a detective, which is not entry-level. Do you have room for somebody else currently in the department to move into that detective position? Or how would you work that change in the department with these funds?
We do, and the vision of a detective within our agency wouldn't necessarily be a promotion or a more expensive position. It would, it would be a lateral position for one of our current officers just to gain an additional skill set and take responsibility for some of those more in-depth investigations. So it's more having enough staff available that we can still cover patrol, to dedicate some time of one of our current positions to gaining those investigative skills and then devoting time to those lengthy investigations. And the, and the entry level, they base their reimbursement. They'll say they will reimburse up to 75% of that entry-level salary. Obviously, once we hire an officer, they get a raise after year one, year two, and year three by their union contract. So our costs are going to exceed that entry level after just one year. But I think they do that because they're not gonna pay 75% of a top pay of a patrol officer.
No, that makes sense, thank you. I, I love that you're seeking out the fines to cover the needs of your department, and so I would support you making the grant application. And so, Mr. Waters, pending any other comments, I can make that motion unless you wanted to wait for other.
I have one other quick question.
Sure, of course.
Thank you, Chief. My question's about the school resource officer and how that money's worked into, into these calculations. If we did not move forward with this, how would those... would those funds be used in the current program?
I guess that question is for the council, because that money, as my understanding, is it goes into the general fund when we receive it from the school district. My intention would be, absent the, the COPS Hiring Program or any funding from that, would be to request an additional position with half of it being funded by the SRO funds. So that would be my intent, and that would be my request when it comes to budget time for two thousand twenty-four. I included it in this, because right now, we have the funds available. So it's something that we can apply towards an additional position or additional positions along with a COPS Hiring Program grant if we were approved for it. But ultimately, the way I see it is it's, it's the council's decision what to do with that money. I think the intent from the school district is, because of the resources that we're providing to them and devoting to them, that it would, we would be able to backfill that position with the funding that they provide.
Right.
But ultimately, it's up to the council.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, Mrs. Bishop?
Okay, so Chief, I move to approve the city's, how do I say this, application for the two thousand twenty-three COPS Hiring Program grant?
I'll second.
Can you give the, the police chief the authority to move forward, I guess, with this?
Sure, I was trying to figure out the right way to say that. Chief, I move to grant you the authority to apply for the two thousand twenty-three COPS Hiring Program grant. Did that cover it, Mr. Waters?
Yes, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are we good with that? From the city staff? Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure. All right, so motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Any additional comments? All right, can we have a roll call vote on that, Sam?
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is the discussion decision on select, selection of the EMS contracted service provider. So we do have a city council motion twenty-three dash four dash one dash one in our packet. And it has two slots, so we'll need to select a, select a provider there tonight. And why don't we go ahead and go into some staff comments, and maybe enter into some discussions before we make a selection there? Mr. Daley?
Short memos included in your packet, giving a quick summary of each of the options before you. Each one, as the city council has indicated, their preference is for a three-year, we'll be pursuing a three-year comp, contract with whoever the council selects. The Cambridge area EMS contract is paramedic-level service with a dead, one dedicated ambulance to the Lake Mills region. They also have a commitment from the town of Lake Mills and the town of Milford to utilize their services. And then the city, we'd also have access to the other Cambridge area EMS apparatus if it became, if, if they were able to, to respond, if the primary was not able to, and the fire department ambulance was, was unable to respond as well. So there is additional apparatus in Cambridge available as necessary. It's for a rate of fifty dollars per capita. That rate is effective through the entire three-year term, so that won't change through the term of the contract. The Ryan Brothers' proposal is for forty-eight dollars per capita with a increase based on the Consumer Price Index, as well as a thirty thousand dollar one-time startup fee. The city would also, would also benefit from additional Ryan Brothers' apparatus that would be in the area that can supplement their service at no additional cost to the city, and it is also a paramedic-level service. So that's a, a quick summary of each option before you. Obviously, they were both before you prior to provide a presentation. And so tonight, I would recommend that we move forward with a selection of one. The, specifically, the Ryan Brothers' proposal is valid through today, essentially, to account for the city council decision tonight. So I will, at that, I'll answer any questions you may have, and leave it to the council for discussion.
Any questions? Yes.
Mr. Daley, I just wonder, for the record, could you summarize for the community why the Lake Mills EMS is not one of the options available to us tonight?
Sure. I had had several conversations with Lake Mills EMS, and essentially, they, regardless of a, of a per capita rate or, or a financial negotiation with them, there simply are not enough staff or volunteers within the organization to provide, to continue providing the service. And so they, at that, they could not, did not feel they could offer us a, a proposal for consideration. It's a, it's a lack of people problem. It's, it's been consistent that we've heard that from them, that it's just a lack of people. It's a statewide issue that, to provide the service and have adequate staff and volunteers to continue providing service at the level that they expect of themselves.
Thank you. I know each of us, you know, gets context from time to time from citizens who have received good care from the Lake Mills EMS, and so I, I want to recognize their organization for that, but also just make sure that our, our citizens understand why they're not one of the choices for us tonight. So thank you.
All right, any further questions, comments?
Mr. Waters?
Yes, Mr. Fields?
Just a quick question, Drake. I know, and here on the proposal says Cambridge is actually giving you a fixed rate of fifty dollars for the three-year contract with Ryan Brothers with their Consumer Price Index adjustment. Do you have any estimates of or budgeting what you think that might tally up to, or what might add up to over the course of the three-year period?
I would be, yeah, I'd be, I'd be guessing. Obviously, the last year, we've seen a significant Consumer Price Index, so if inflation were to continue at the current rate, I believe last year it was eight percent. So I can do some quick math, but typically, Consumer Price Index is probably more in the two to three percent range, but, so if it was at, you know, the low end of that, at two percent, you'd see it go up to close to forty-nine dollars per capita after the first year. If it was on the high end, eight percent per capita, we'd see it jump to fifty-one eighty-four in the second year. I don't have a, a prediction on what the Consumer Price Index will be. I know that inflationary pressures have eased a little bit, but they're, they're still higher than, than we're, we're used to in years past. So it may not be at the eight percent, but it also likely won't be at the two percent that we've been used to in, in past years. So I would, somewhere between, somewhere in the middle there, I think we can likely expect for the first year, and then subsequent years. I don't know that I have enough information to give you an, an educated estimate on what that might be.
Thank you.
Yes?
Mr. Daley, the difference may be too small over the scheme of the next three years, but with our previous Lake Mills EMS contract, they came back with a rate, and I, I'm not clear on if the, the per capita that we were looking at each year changed with any new additions to the population, or if that was on like a ten-year basis with the census. Would the per capita rate stay the same for the three years of the contract, or would we look at that anew every year with the CPI increase?
Sam, are you able to speak to, did the, did we adjust the city's contribution to Lake Mills EMS based on the DOA municipal population estimates, or was it based on the most recent census? I believe we did update it based on the DOA population estimates.
I believe that is correct.
Then my next question, if I may, was there any, since we're just looking at a summary here, and I can't recall, was there any discussion of a cap of the CPI rate for the Ryan Brothers contract, like caved at, you know, six percent per year if it were to go over?
Uh, that was not, it was not included in their proposal to ca, to cap that rate.
Any other questions or comments?
All right, I'll comment real quickly here. There's a, a lot that goes into this decision. We had presentations from both groups, of course. We went into additional questions that, that they both gave as feedback on. And, and to me, it's just looking at that best service that will serve our community the best, and, and piling through the data to analyze that and, and make my vote. I realize that in, in three years, hopefully, the, the plan will be to, to shift to a fire EMS joint group here in Lake Mills. We'll need to work with Jefferson County and figure out if there's some shared resources that we can use, some synergies, so that we can, we can possibly have some shared services moving forward, but to use that staffing to address both the fire and EMS needs in the future. So the way I'm looking at it is, this is just kind of the beginning. This is a, a solution that gets us to that three years, but then we need to start working on this other solution to bring our fire and EMS department together in the future, and figure out what's best for our community, maybe even include Jefferson County as, as part of that community outlook as well. But in the end, we have to do what's best for the citizens of Lake Mills. That's, that's our duty. That's our, our responsibility here as the Lake Mills City Council. So that's the way I'm, I'm voting tonight. Any other questions or comments? See none. Is there a motion? Oh, I have one more other question. The reason this is before is tonight is because there is a licensing process that takes place, and it's about a, a sixty-day process, I believe, and that's why it's pretty important to, to make that vote happen tonight, so that whatever service we select can, can move forward with that, with that process. Is, is that right?
That's correct. The, you have to have an operating, operational plan approved by the state, and they have up to sixty days to provide you an, an answer to that operational plan. And so in order to get an operational plan approved, and to staff up, and get the service operational by July one, this is why the, the decision is timely. So that's correct. Why the decision is before you tonight is to ensure that whatever service the city council selects is ready and operational by July one, when Lake Mills EMS ceases service.
And of course, it's our desire to have the service work with the existing Lake Mills EMS, and make sure that there's a, a smooth transition and everything
That's correct.
flows correctly in, in the transition. So, okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve city council motion twenty-three dash four dash one dash one, selection of the city of Lake Mills contracted emergency medical services provider, selecting option number two, Ryan Brothers.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow, for the Ryan Brothers selection. Is there any comments or discussion at this point?
I do. I may have seconded this, but I am still at odds as, as to which of these are the best option for the citizens. Because of the fact that we have two very viable options here, my concern is not what is written in the, in the next coming months, but in the next three years. Which of these is going to be the easiest transition into the plan that we intend to have? The only concern that I have with Cambridge is, is how is that going to, how are they going to meld in with, or be able to strip away from the, the servicing of our environment, or of our city, where Ryan Brothers is a, is their own entity and can go anywhere. So they have their own, you know, their own, they're not, their livelihood is not based upon whether or not they have a, a city's entire contract. They are able to go and, and to other places. It's very difficult, and I, I will be heavily debating about which one is in the best interest of this, of, of all of the citizens of our area after this vote.
Any other comments or discussion? All right, so... A positive vote on this roll call would be to select Ryan Brothers for our EMS contracted service provider? All right, so can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you. All right, so that was a long time coming.
Two years? About that?
Twenty years.
Twenty, yes, true.
All right, so hopefully, there'll be a, a smooth transition. The city staff will need to work through this and, and make sure that, that things work properly. Please let us know if there's any help that you need from council along the way, but you have your direction at this point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item G on the agenda is ordinance twelve fifty-three. It's the third reading. Sam?
One moment.
All right, take your time.
Ordinance one two five three, in ordinance annexate, annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, parcel identification number zero zero two zero seven one four one eight two two zero zero two.
Thank you. So this was a third reading. So normally, we would bring this up for a vote at this point. Is there any staff discussion?
Are there any questions? I think this has been pretty well discussed at this point. It's an annexation based on a petitioner's application. It's, we're seeing more and more of these in, in this specific area. As septics fail, as wells fail, city utilities are available. As a condition of connecting to those utilities, annexation is typically required by petitioner action. So that's where we're at. Third reading allows you to move forward with approval. If you have any questions, I'd certainly be willing to entertain and answer as best as I can.
Any questions? Or comment? See none. Can we have a roll call, please, on ordinance twelve-
I need a motion.
Oh, we will need a motion. I'm just excited to move on here, I guess. Can we have a motion, please?
I move to approve ordinance twelve fifty-three, the annexation of, give me a moment, because I just lost it, annexing the territory to the city of Lake Mills, parcel identification number zero zero two zero one seven four one eight two two zero zero two.
Second?
Just as a point of clarification there, I believe that you misspoke just a little bit. Ordinance twelve fifty-three is accurate. I believe you exchanged two numbers there. It's zero zero two zero seven one four one eight two two zero zero two.
I will clarify that I am moving to approve ordinance twelve fifty-three, in ordinance annexing territory to the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin, parcel identification number zero zero two zero seven one four one eight two two zero zero two.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mr. Fields. Any further discussion? All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next is Ordinance 1254. This is the second reading. Sam, can you do that reading, please?
Ordinance 1254, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance 609, vehicles all terrain, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
All right. That was the second reading. Any discussion? Yes?
Mr. Waters, I would like to move to advance to the third reading of Ordinance 1254.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So motion to move to the third reading by Mrs. Bishop, a second by Mr. Fields. Discussion? Yes?
I have a question for staff, I guess, assuming that Mrs. Bishop would, after this amendment, then like to proceed with adopting the ordinance. We have in the current ordinance a staff review of the effectiveness of, you know, the ATV use and chapter no later than April 2024. And at the time we adopted that, that was last October, so it sort of contemplated roughly a year and a half experience with the ordinance. Because my first question would be, if we were to adopt this ordinance tonight, when would we expect to have signs up and people lawfully able to start using ATVs on our streets?
We have the signs. Our, our streets foreman is actually here tonight, if he can answer that as well. But I believe we have the signs and we can install them, you know, almost immediately after the DOT gives us the go-ahead.
Yeah. Right now, I had contact with, for the UTV organization, Mr. Orcott, and he contacted the gentleman that had the sign, that has the club signs, and they haven't made it to our building yet. But I still believe we have to wait until the state DOT gets the signs up on Highway 89, and I don't know what the timeframe is on that. We'll be, once we get the signs, they get that. I mean, we can put them up in a timely manner. But it's, it depends upon state DOT.
Is the state waiting for our approval?
Yes.
Okay.
They're waiting for this ordinance. And then do they need to do some review of this ordinance or issue us some kind of approval letter?
It gets forwarded back to them, and they complete their final review.
Okay.
So they haven't guaranteed that it'll be approved right away after we send this back to them. But it's, this is the only comment they've sent back to us at this time. So we're assuming this is the last piece that they need from us in order to get approval.
And then, it sounds like to me their approval is telling us the exact little grid coordinates where we set the sign in the ground on the state highway.
Yeah, correct. And then also clarifying that city staff have to be the ones to install any of the signs that a club can install them on our behalf. They can reimburse us for that cost, but they can't be the actual installers.
And so the, the reason I'm asking these questions is wondering if it would make sense to extend the period for ordinance review to allow a little bit more time for, for our staff to have experience with ATV and UTV use on our streets. And that requires an ordinance change. So I'm just trying to figure out, you know, that date is in the ordinance. And so I'm trying to figure out, you know, how this is going to move forward tonight.
If you desire to change that date, you could certainly motion to further amend the ordinance. However, I, I think that that review date would still work. You'll have at least one full spring and summer season, fall season, where ATVs will be introduced into traffic patterns and such within the City of Lake Mills. So there can be a bit of an audit during that time. And there should be decent information that's available and to be able to present to the city council. That April 2024 review requirement is completely within your ballywick, and you have the choice of whether or not to engage in that, what that review looks like, whether or not any action is going to be taken after that review. So at this point, my recommendation would be just to keep it as it is. Allow the council to go through a process at that time and determine whether or not it's appropriate to keep going or whatever changes or recommendations you'd have at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Andre.
Yes?
Ms. Bishop, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if I'm looking at the same ordinance that we were talking about before, where we were talking about certain ages being identified on the ordinance, that there had, they had to be a certain age. I'm not seeing it in here. Is that something that is assumed based on other information, or can you help me with that?
Yeah, we did put ages in the last ordinance. This is just updating Wisconsin DOT requirements for specific language about who can emplace the signs and who is maintaining the signs.
All right. I misunderstood. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments? I just have one last quick thing that normally I, I wouldn't like to skip to the third reading, because I'd want to give the community an opportunity to respond to it. But this is very similar to what we've already talked about and what's already passed. It's just a quick update to meet the state requirements. So I, I have no problem moving to the third reading tonight. So. Anything else? All right. So first, we're going to vote on Mrs. Bishop's motion to move to a third reading. Can we have a roll call on that, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
All right. Thank you. So can we have that third reading, Sam?
Ordinance 1254, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance 609, vehicles all terrain, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
Thank you for the formality there. So that was our third reading. So after a third reading, we normally have a vote. Is there any further discussion, staff comment or comments from the council?
No further comment from staff.
Council? All right. So we are voting on Ordinance 1254, which amends the City of Lake Mills Ordinance Section, Section 609, vehicles all terrain. I guess we need a motion for that first, and then we can actually have this vote. So can I have a motion for that?
Mr. Waters, I move to approve Ordinance 1254, amending City of Lake Mills Ordinance Section 609, vehicles all terrain, City of Lake Mills, Wisconsin.
A second.
It's a motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mr. Fields. Just to double check, any comment or discussion at this point? CNN, let's move forward with the vote. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
No.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1.
Thank you. All right. That wraps up the, the agenda for city council tonight. Let's move to recommendations for future agenda. I mentioned that I was going to talk a little bit here. Why don't I go ahead and do that? So it was a great pleasure to, to be able to walk around town the last two weeks and canvass and talk to many people in my district. I recognize that that was only half of the city. But, but to, to give you an idea of what's on people's minds and what we may want to consider for future agenda items, snow plowing was, was very high on the list. I think that was high on the list because one day I was out there. It happened to be a foot of snow that had just landed on the, on the ground. And, and of course, everyone was clearing their driveways, and, and it was a hot topic that day. But snow plowing was, was very big. Sandy beach overwhelmingly, there's a, a large support for, for sandy beach. And I know that's an agenda item that we're looking at for the future. And I believe within the next couple of months, we may be looking at, at doing some things there. School referendum was huge. I explained to people that city council doesn't have much to do with the school referendum, but a lot of people are concerned about that. And I know that that hit the newspaper here in the last week or two, so that's probably on people's minds. Sidewalks. People are confused about our city policy. I know that we've directed that to Public Works, and I let people know that. So hopefully, Public Works will be reviewing the sidewalks, and we'll be throwing that back towards council, council with, with a new policy that hopefully, council will take action on one way or another. One area in my district is, is the area around the middle school. And there's some narrow street concerns in that area. I know that we recently passed a college street project and approved a narrow street there. And some of the residents are concerned that the streets are too narrow for parking on both sides. And if we continue to move in that direction where we're not widening streets, maybe we need to look at parking on one side of the street. So it's probably something that Public Works would want to take a look at and get feedback from, from staff in that area. Tyrena Point, that's a newer community on the south side of town. I believe I stated that right? Is that what that community is called? Yes. Tyrena Point, a lot of new residents there, a lot of young families, and they want their park. The city basically, at the time that that project was approved, waived the park requirement in the first phase, and it looks like that's something we'll be looking at in the second phase. So, so that's something that we may want to look at when there's future expansions like that. Is there?
Mr. Waters, may I just offer one clarification there?
You bet. Thank you.
There wasn't a, a requirement that was waived. Fees were paid in lieu of park.
Okay.
So that, it, it was a conscious decision that was made by administration and certainly the council at that point in time. And it, multiple considerations, but it is an option that is presented to developers of such new neighborhoods. Fees in lieu are, are very common. New parks do require more service, more man-hours, et cetera. So there's, there's a given and take there. So there wasn't a waived requirement sensitive to that one. So.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that. So that's something in the future, as we see expansion, we may want to look at, at how we treat that type of situation in the future. And then EMS moving forward. EMS, of course, people knew that we were voting on that tonight. It was a hot topic that's been in the news for quite a while. And it was very neat to hear that, that they weren't so much concerned about tonight's vote. They were more concerned about what's happening moving forward after that. So of course, that's our direction. That's something we need to be working on. Just because of tonight's vote is, is done. There's a lot more work to be done with EMS, and I think we're all conscious of that. So that's kind of the feedback that I got in, in the last couple of weeks. Anything else?
I have a couple of items that I'd like to mention. One, I will probably bring a resolution at the next council meeting based on seeking state support for local government funding. I've been kind of following what the League of Wisconsin Municipalities is doing and some of the recommendations that they've developed. And an opportunity that we have is to adopt a resolution from our city, basically sending that to our lawmakers, letting them know of the concerns that we have. The, the sample resolution that the League of Wisconsin Municipalities has put forward doesn't recommend a particular solution, but just identifies, you know, the concerns about the reduced state funding and how it's impacted our community and asks them to work on solutions. So I'll be bringing that next time. And then I think in light of everything we've been working on with the EMS over the last year and a half, and the longevity of time that the Lake Mills EMS organization has served our community, I think it would be appropriate for us to do some sort of recognition of their organization sometime before their service to our community comes to an end or around the time that that comes to an end. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right. CNN, that concludes our meeting tonight. So the meeting is adjourned at 8:05. Thank you.